We're gonna get started if everyone would take a seat. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 Wednesday, May 28th, 2025, regular scheduled board meeting. We will begin our meeting with our invocation from Pastor Llena Himes, who will also lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
If everyone would stand.
Thank you, if you please stand. Let's pray. Our Father, we come together upon this night for the purpose of government and decisions, and so, Lord, we not only invoke but invite your presence into this place, that you would send your grace into this room, for we know without grace, peace is not possible. So, Father, meet with us and help that things will be done decently and in order, and just bless this meeting of government tonight. And, Father, I want to lift up all those out now laboring in our great county, and the highways and hedges of this area, that you'd protect them, bless their families, and, Lord, we'll thank you for all you do in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
We begin with a proclamation, oh, wait a minute, let me see. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We are going to be moving the county attorney's item Exhibit 3 to the consent agenda. I have a proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week, May 18th through the 24th. Ms. Amber Smith, if you will come forward, please.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. It is a privilege to present to the public today a proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week as May 18th through the 24th, 2025, whereas the dedicated professionals of the Henry County Public Works Department are entrusted with the planning, construction, maintenance, and operation of vital infrastructure and services that contribute to the health, safety, and overall quality of life of every resident in our community, and whereas these critical functions could not be accomplished without the commitment and expertise of engineers, technicians, field crews, equipment operators, administrative staff, and leaders within the Public Works Department who work tirelessly to serve the needs of our growing county, and whereas this year's theme, People, Purpose, Presence, highlights three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve in their communities every day. Meeting the needs of the people is what gives public works this sense of purpose. Many times, public works professionals will never meet those whose lives have been positively impacted, because when things are going right, few notice that public works is there. Yet, with or without fanfare, public's works is ever-present, working quietly in the background to enhance daily life and ensure the well-being of all, and whereas it is fitting to recognize and celebrate the value of public works and to educate residents, civic leaders, and future generations about the essential role these services play in everyday life, and whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, which honors the contributions of public work professionals across America. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Dee Anglin III, Michael Price, and Kevin J. Lewis, hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week in Henry County, Georgia, and encourages all residents, businesses, schools, and civic organizations to recognize and express appreciation for the outstanding efforts of the Henry County Public Works Department and its dedicated staff this 28th day of May, 2025, and we do have proclamations for all the departments in public works.
Okay, we get the Public Works Department to come forward, so we can take a picture, please.
Could you go ahead and call out all of the departments, and then they'll come up?
Okay.
Yes, SPOLOST, DOT, and STORMWATER, if you could please come forward. Thank you.
Okay, come up for mission.
(applause)
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. One, three, two, one.
And now, Chair, as they exit the room, we do have a little sweet treat outside.
For our public works team, so just stop by and see Shannon on your way out.
Sorry. The next proclamation is honoring Commissioner Robinson with the 2025 Prominence Award recipient, and this will be presented by the National Women of Achievement, Southern Crescent Chapter, Ms. Sharon Mosley.
Ms. Sharon.
Good evening, Madam Commissioner, Vice Commissioner, and all the Commissioners on the Board, and also all my fellow residents in Henry County. Each year, Southern Crescent gives awards, recognizes people in the community who are just ordinary people doing extraordinary things. We watch people. I am by profession a psychotherapist, so I am by nature a people watcher. I look at behaviors, I watch things that people do, and when, most time when people think nobody is watching, that's when they're at their best, and we recognize people who are at their best when no one is watching. This year, we chosen Commissioner, Vice Chair Commissioner Neet Robinson. Neet has demonstrated strengths beyond measure. Whenever you call her, she's there. At every function in this county, Neet is there. Neet is, I hate this song, but she has loops on the ground.[626.41][626.41](laughter) She has loops on the ground, but we, and we've noticed that, we recognize that. One of the greatest things in this world for me is doing what I love to do and realizing that somebody is taking heed to it. That's, that's, that's the awards that man can give you, but we know that in our final day, God will give us our rewards. Last time I was up here last year, I got rolled up about on the internet, don't y'all write nothing about me, because I'm simply doing my, my part and making sure that I give the way I should give, the way God has given it to me. So, without further ado, Southern Crescent Chapter of National Women of Achievement recognizes the willingness of this young lady to be more than just an ordinary human being, but being extraordinary. You all call her Neet, I call her Grace on the fire. You call her Vice Commissioner, I call her my sister in Christ. Commissioner.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Sharon Mosley. Is Mr. Joseph Smith here? Has he arrived? Okay, all right. Thank you. So, next we have recognition of Stockbridge High School Concert Choir, led by Mr. Joseph Smith, who is the director, on their performance at Carnegie Hall in New York on April the 12th. Amber?
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. It is a great honor to present these certificates of recognition to members of Stockbridge High School's Concert Choir for their outstanding musical achievements during the performance at Carnegie Hall on April 12th, 2025. Each of these members have dedicated practice time and hard work to delivering musical excellence. The Board of Commissioners are proud to honor them today for their amazing contributions. I will now present each member their award individually and ask that they come forward when their name is called. We do have a few members who are not present today, so I will take the time to recognize them now. Alora Davis, Shang Ni, and Zamar Woofolk have all received certificates of recognition. In recognition of your exceptional performance and artistic excellence as a member of the Stockbridge High School Concert Choir, your selection and participation in the Carnegie Hall performance on April 12th, 2025, represents some remarkable accomplishment for a student of your age and talent, exemplifying the best of Henry County's youth. The Henry County Board of Commissioners, Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Dee Anglin III, Michael Price, and Kevin Lewis applaud your dedication to your craft and passion for music, and they proudly celebrate Sanaya Miller's achievement.
Does she come forward, please?
In honor of your extraordinary leadership, vision, and commitment to musical excellence, under your direction, the Stockbridge High School Concert Choir has not only persevered through challenges, but flourished as a diverse, expressive, and award-winning ensemble. Your role in preparing students for performing at Carnegie Hall on April 12th, 2025 is a testament to your dedication to nurturing both talent and character. Through your leadership, the choir has become a musical family, a vehicle for emotional expression, and a platform for future voices. We recognize and commend your work in cultivating young artists, creating a legacy of excellence, and enriching the cultural fabric of this county. The Henry County Board of Commissioners honors Choir Director Mr. Joseph Smith for this amazing contribution.
District 1, Veterans Advisory Board, Willie Brown to fill unexpired term 12 that ends on 12/31/28. Commissioner Wilson, this is your appointment to that board. Would you like to make the motion?
Got a motion and a second.
District 4 Transportation Advisory Committee, Anne Fields to fill unexpired term of 12/31/26. Commissioner Price, this is in your district, would you like to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Anne Fields for the unexpired term for the Transportation Advisory Board.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Appointment to McIntosh Trail Community Service Board, Judge Vincent A. Lottie, term is from 5/28/2025 to 5/28/2028. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Consent agenda. If the county manager, county manager Matthews will come forward to read our consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Board and Pillars of the Community. This is your consent agenda for Wednesday, May 28th, 6:30 PM. Under Parks and Recreation, we have a resolution to accept the conditional grant award of $30,000 and to fund an outdoor fitness court and community wellness initiative at Village United Park in the amount of $185,000 utilizing impact fees and/or SPOLOST funds. This project is located in District 2. Under SPOLOST, we have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 3,508.08 square feet of right-of-way, a permanent easement of 847.05 square feet, a temporary easement of 409.58 square feet, and a driveway easement of 6,534 square feet, more or less, in Landlot 171 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to the provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19. This is for the State Route 81 Widening Project, Parcel Number 91, T-SPOLOST Project, District 1 and District 3. Under the county attorney, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Elections and Voter Registration Committee, appointing Benita Harris as the Member-at-Large to the Henry County Board of Elections and Voter Registration. We also, oh, no, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, that ends the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Board, is there any questions or comment regarding the consent agenda? All in favor, can I get a motion? Okay. Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is the annexation. The city of Stockbridge has a, received a request for annexation. Tucson, are you presenting this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and Pillars of the Community. The item before you is an annexation request submitted by the city of Stockbridge for property west of Fuke Drive and north of Jodico Road for a total of 24.995 acres. The property is located west of the future Western Parallel Connector, and that's highlighted in green on the, on the screen. The current zoning is C3, a highway commercial, and a future land use map designation of high-density mixed use. Included with the request is a rezoning request from County C3 to City Multifamily Residential for the purpose of a multifamily development. The included site plan and letter of intent indicates a development with 321 units and a density of 12.8 dwelling units per acre. Also included is a request to amend the comprehensive plan and future land use map from County, County High Density Mixed Use to City of Stockbridge High Density Residential. Our county flume designation will support and encourage mixed-use developments that includes commercial and residential uses, whereas the result, the request is for City High Density Residential and only supports residential development and conflicts with our current designations. The county also provides fire services to the properties within incorporated Stockbridge. Permit reviews, however, conducted by the city and approvals are not shared with the county. If annexed, county fire services may respond to an emergency without access to critical fire-related permit approvals, which presents a significant safety concern for the county fire staff responding to emergencies. Planning and zoning staff recommendation recommends objection to the request based on an annexation, rezoning, and comprehensive plan amendment would result in a significant change in land use and increased burden in the delivery of fire services as a direct result. And I ask any questions you may have.
Is there any questions from the Board? Here and now, can, okay, you got, okay.
Just to support what you're saying, Tucson, thank you for that. This, this particular property, they have been trying to get the county to condemn an easement so that they could have access to the Western Parallel Connector, and with that easement, they wanted, of course, as you can see, they have a request because they want to build 321 apartments. Upon notification from me that we would not support such an item, this is the reason that they went to the city of Stockbridge. This is not the first time that people here know from us, and they want to go to the city of Stockbridge because they think that they'll be able to, to get these types of developments passed. So, for the reason that you named, where you talk about safety, especially with our fire personnel, and also, City of Stockbridge would have to add additional police personnel, which I don't think they have at this time, I do recommend denial as well. So, I just want to give people a history of this particular piece of property and what they're trying to do, and to know that they were told no by the district commissioner and by the county for what they were trying to do. So, yes, I am making, I move to deny the annexation for the said purposes.
Okay, and Commissioner Anglin seconded. Is there any other discussion from the Board? Here and now, and all in favor? Motion carries, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our budget adoption, proposed, proposed budget adoption. Ms. Benita Campbell, Budget Director, make the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and Pillars of the Community. Today is the second of two public hearings to review and vote on the proposed FY26 General Fund and Special Service District budgets. We have held two budget workshops, one on April 1st and the second on April 15th, where we have discussed the budget that we will review again today. Since the proposed budget amount has not changed since the last presentation on May 6th, I will quickly go through the slides. As previously stated, this year's budget is based on the current mileage rate of 15.733 mils. As in previous years' budget submissions, the goal of financial services is to create and present a balanced budget utilizing available revenues to fund projected expenditures. The budget has been built based on feedback from each Commissioner and includes funding to further support the following three Board identified priorities: offering fair and competitive salaries and benefits for our employees, advancing Board priorities and strategic partnerships, and funding department essentials to maintain current service levels for Henry County residents. After careful review of Department budget request submittals and subsequent alignment with the FY26 county priorities and objectives, county leadership is recommending the FY26 General Fund and Special Service District budgets.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and pillars of the community. Today is the second of two public hearings to review and vote on the proposed FY-26 General Fund and Special Service District budgets. We have held two budget workshops, one on April first and the second on April fifteenth, where we have discussed the budget that we will review again today. Since the proposed budget amount has not changed since the last presentation on May sixth, I will quickly go through the slides. As previously stated, this year's budget is based on the current mileage rate of fifteen point seven-three-three mils. As in previous years' budget submissions, the goal of financial services is to create and present a balanced budget utilizing available revenues to fund projected expenditures. The budget has been built based on feedback from each commissioner and includes funding to further support the following three board identified priorities: offering fair and competitive salaries and benefits for our employees, advancing board priorities and strategic partnerships, and funding department essentials to maintain current service levels for Henry County residents. After careful review of department budget request submittals and subsequent alignment with the FY-26 county priorities and objectives, county leadership is recommending the FY-26 General Fund and Special Service District budgets be two hundred and eighty-seven point eight million dollars, which is twenty-eight point one million or ten point eight percent higher than the FY-25 adopted budget of two hundred and fifty-nine point seven million dollars. This proposed budget allows the county to maintain current service levels while also providing support to three significant additions for FY-26: the North Mount Carmel Rec Center, providing support for the newly established Henry County Police Academy, and preparing for the opening of two new fire stations in FY-26 and '27. Some of the major items included in the proposed budget are: six million dollars for debt payments, three-point-three million dollar increase for inmate medical and additional jail personnel, two million dollars for additional fire personnel for stations seventeen and eighteen, one point eight million dollars for critical need personnel, one point five million dollars in additional funding for the Henry County Department of Transportation, and one point four million dollars for personnel and operating expenses related to the fifth state court judge coming on board in January twenty-twenty-six. Shown on this slide is a graphical representation of general fund budget increases. As you can see, as the county has grown in population, thereby causing departmental needs to increase, thereby supporting the annual general fund budget increases shown above. Listed on the slide above are the identified priorities by each district commissioner. As you can see, a common theme amongst just about all of the commissioners and the chair are road improvements, park improvements, and public safety. These priorities were top of mind as county leadership reviewed all of the departmental budget submissions for FY-26. The FY-26 proposed budget currently includes a recommendation for seventy-eight new positions, twelve of which specifically are support staff for the fifth state court judge. Coming on board in January twenty-twenty-six, this slide details the departments and positions currently included in this recommendation. Here you have a comparison of the original requests we've received on the left compared to the items being recommended for inclusion and approval in the FY-26 budget on the right. This budget assumes that we maintain the current mileage rate of fifteen point seven-three-three mils. Departmental requests for personnel and operating expenses total thirty-six point five million dollars compared to nine point nine million dollars being recommended. Our recommendation is twenty-seven million dollars lower than the request, primarily due to uncertain financial impacts of U.S. tariff implementation, potential litigation related to impact fees, economic uncertainty, and loss of grant funding due to audit delays. As additional support for the summary just shown, this is a division summary that indicates where each department rolls up. Finally, to recap, we started with our adopted FY-25 General Fund and Special Service District budget of two hundred and fifty-nine point seven million dollars. After a majority of the twenty-twenty-four property tax collections in the November-December timeframe, it was determined that we would have additional revenue collections of approximately seventeen point seven million dollars, primarily due to the additional, primarily due to the three-mil increase specifically for fire, police, and parks and rec. The board did not take formal action on the seventeen point seven million dollars, meaning we did not formally add these dollars to the budget. However, due to prior board commitments, the funds were allocated as such. Seven point five million was used for capital purchases for fire. Six point four million was set aside in fund balance as a contingency due to the economic uncertainty. Two point nine million dollars was designated for debt service payments, and nine hundred thousand was to cover critical need personnel and operational expenses. So of the seventeen point seven million dollars, only three point eight million dollars would have increased the operating budget, which would have taken our budget from two hundred and fifty-nine point seven million dollars to two hundred and sixty-three point five million dollars. For FY-26, the current recommendation is to add twenty-four point three million dollars in additional expenses. That then leads to a recommended budget of two hundred and eighty-seven point eight million dollars, which goes along with all of the previously provided materials. Shown here is a list of positions identified as critical need positions that must be funded prior to the adoption of the new budget. This now concludes my presentation for the second public hearing. I'm prepared to take any questions that the board may have.
We're going to do the public hearing, just stand by, Benita. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to come and speak, there's a collective toll of ten minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Leslie Wollin, and I'm a trustee for the Henry County Library System. As I speak to you this evening, and I ask that you please keep in mind a few things. One, priorities number one and especially number three set forth in the Henry County budget presentation. Number two, the Henry County government pillars of excellence, especially service and inclusion. And three, the fact that libraries today are so much more than checking out books. The proposed FY-2026 budget for libraries does not include the small increase of a hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars requested to cover the increase in the employer's cost for health insurance and the increase in the mandatory employment's contribution to the employee retirement fund. The health insurance increase is part of a phased multi-year increase. The BOC has covered this increase the past two years, and we're a little puzzled why it's been declined this year. We have received a legal opinion from attorneys that public libraries cannot withdraw from state health, and even if we could, the other options for the health insurance would be much more expensive than they are now with state health. The FY-2026 proposed budget includes many increases to other departments and the hiring of digital personnel. We're wondering why a small increase for libraries is not included. Without the help from the BOC, we will have to cut a hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars from our budget for FY-2026. This will, without question, require cutting services, hours, and staff. Henry County Library Services will have to make some very hard decisions. Without this increase, budget priority number one, maintain fair and competitive salaries and benefits for employees, and priority number three, fund department essentials to maintain current service levels, will be difficult to meet. And also, as we think about the Henry County pillars of excellence, especially service and inclusion, as you reconsider the budget proposal. Service bring the highest level of service to our citizens in the most respectful and efficient manner, and inclusion. We are committed to serving all citizens and visitors and celebrating our diverse population, ensuring that all people feel valued, welcomed, and heard. When you fully support your local libraries, you help to create and to support educated, productive citizens of all ages and socioeconomic backgrounds. Thus, you are creating a better quality of life. And as you take in the reconsideration, I just want to mention a few things beyond checking out books that our Henry County Library Services do for this community. They greatly help the unsheltered population. You would not believe what they're doing for some of those people. They're getting them off the streets. We have the kiosk and the branches where SNAPs and TANF benefits can easily be accessed, and people are there to help them. They're teaching basic computer skills to our senior citizens. They're even helping animal control by educating our citizens about teen hour and getting even young children to understand the importance of small things like that. They've introduced our children to STEM experiences. They have hands-on experience with real animals. They have free tutorial services for our students in the school system, and it can be something you need at ten o'clock at night, and they have that service available. There's a memory lab to preserve family history. Matter of fact, they've started on a project with Lemons and Sons to preserve African-American history in this county. They're installing pickup walkers, like you see somewhere, like at Home Depot and other places, for after-hours use. And once the addition is finished at Piedmont Hospital, Piedmont is going to have a set of those lockers put in for their employees. We're also offering, this summer alone, we did this last summer, this summer alone, two hundred and sixty children in this county will have a free eye exam, and if they need glasses, they will get them, which will help them succeed in school and become a better, educated, productive citizen. Please take this into, please forgive me. When I talk about the kids, I do get emotional. I'm a retired teacher and a librarian, so this is very dear to my heart and many others. So please take this into consideration, and don't let us have to cut hours. It's just a small amount. Thank you.
I'm Connie Stan, I'm a conservative in Ray. Four-twenty-six, Chase Marion Way. I just have some questions, going back to what this wonderful woman had just spoke about. How much are we cutting from our budget from our animal rescue, our litter cleanup areas? The homeless population or our children? And how much are we putting towards the legal fees for bad decisions that are made by our government? Like the impact fee case that's going to come out of our pocket and the other ones? And then, how much are we going to keep paying for security personnel for our elected officials? Those areas should be cut first before we cut anything that should matter to this community, because this community is kind of falling to the wayside. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anne Fields, I'm three-two-nine, Chase Marion Way. I would just like to mention and remind everybody on the board. You guys know I served on the SPOLOs six for District four, and I did put a motion on the floor during our public meetings to try to get that hundred thousand dollars allocated for CapEx grants to the library. And as a parent and grandparent, even though my kids aren't here, I feel like if there were more parents, they would get up and tell you to. Please continue to support our libraries as best we can in this county. It serves a very important function for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, this ends the public comment. Sherri, I have a couple of questions. What is the library's funding sources? The library system, their employees are, their salaries are paid by the state, and their health insurance is by the state. So what obligates us to have to make up the difference in their insurance if they are state employees and they have the state health care? What, what does the county fund and what does the state fund with regards to libraries? And does the libraries receive impact fees? And as opposed to cutting services, hours, and staff, what other operational costs that they could look at making up that difference?
So, Madam Chair, I think you had a couple of questions. I'm going to try to start with the first question in terms of what are the funding sources that I am aware of that the library services receive? So as the county government, we provide general fund dollars to the library. This year, this board has been presented with a three-point-one million dollar allocation from the Henry County General Fund budget. In addition to that, the library also receives impact fees. And so for every building permit that is issued, a portion of those impact fees goes to the library. The average is about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars annually. Keep in mind, our impact fees are split amongst libraries, public safety, parks and recreation, and so that is their portion of it. The state of Georgia, based on the latest information that we have received, shows that they allocate four hundred and seventy-five thousand eighty dollars to the libraries. And so the greatest amount of the allocation does come from the general fund budget. You also asked specifically how those funds are expended, and the bulk of the four-seventy-five from the state goes to salaries for the library state employees. I will say that this board has previously made amendments at mid-year in previous fiscal years, and most recently last year, with the budget, you all did allocate additional funding for an increase, not only to the state insurance, to the tune of about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, but you also increased the salaries for those state employees in the amount of a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And so year over year, there has been an increase in their budget. I know you didn't ask this, but I want to make sure that you all have all the information and that the information to the public is being put out correctly. So, and I may ask you to stay and speak to that part. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, the board allocated two point three million dollars to the library. In fiscal year twenty-three, two point six million. In fiscal year twenty-four, two point eight million. And for fiscal year twenty-five, three point one. We talk about our pillars of excellence, and we talk about fiscal stewardship. We talk about integrity, service, accountability, and collaboration. And Madam Chair, we are trying our best to make sure that all agencies that come before this board, we are making sure that we are providing them with the funding that we have available based on their needs. From an operational standpoint, in addition to the three-point-one million, it does not include any facility improvements, any roof replacements, any air condition upgrades, any of that information. And so I'm going to have the deputy county manager speak to what that cost to the county is in addition to the general fund dollars that you all allocate.
Yes, thank you, county manager. Just from the work that's been done by our in-house facility maintenance crew for the Fairview location, we were at eighty-two thousand dollars over the past five years. For the Hampton location, we're at forty-six thousand dollars over the past five years. Stand by just a second. Locust Grove has fifty-seven thousand dollars over the past five years, and the McDonough location, forty-two thousand dollars. Forty-two thousand dollars. We also assisted with grant monies that equated to over nine hundred thousand dollars, and that SPOLOs five piece, that was a hundred thousand dollars as well.
So the nine hundred thousand came from the state?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct. And then I think, Madam Chair, one of the requests, or the specific request was regarding the insurance. As soon as the request was brought to our budget team internally, we met, and the option that we presented was, hey, is it possible for us to bring those employees onto the county insurance? We were told by the library administration that legally they could not do that. And so we are trying to look at options to assist where we can. But I want to be clear to this board that every time there has been a request, we have tried to accommodate what those requests are. Every department this year was asked to hold their budgets flat. And so we've tried to cut where we can cut, but our county is growing and the needs are growing. I think the request was in, one of your questions you asked is, you know, what else can we look at? It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The county allocates three-point-one million. The state allocates about four hundred and seventy-five thousand that goes short salaries. And so we would be welcome to sitting down with them to look at that three-point-one and trying to determine how that, how those monies are expended. What line items are those monies going towards? I know that impact fees cannot be used for operational costs. They can only be used for capital costs, and I know that that is a small amount. But three-point-one million is a pretty large amount if it's not a hundred percent solely for those salaries. And so, again, our staff, our budget team, would welcome sitting down with the library to figure out how we can look at that number and then report back to this board in terms of how that three-point-one million is being allocated.
And Board, we've also discussed working with them and our lobbyists to assist them and lobbying for more funds from the state agencies as well to help fund their initiative.
Yeah, because the governor's got a surplus.
That's correct.
And that would help us out if we could get some of that funding from the state to assist in their state employees.
And Madam Chair, as a reminder, I believe you sent a letter to all of the city mayors asking for assistance from the cities to allocate some additional. asking for assistance from the cities to allocate some additional funding because we knew that this was going to be a concern because I think we've heard year over year that there is a need to increase the allocation from the board or from the county.
Commissioner Robinson.
I'd just want to make a comment. I too wanted to say what were the cities doing because the libraries sit within the city limits, so I think we need to go back and revisit that as well. But thank you for explaining this because it does show each year that there is an increase. And I've received a call earlier from my board appointee so that way she can understand exactly what's going on. But to what the chair had requested, how soon can you all sit down with them? Because to me, I think it's more so an educational piece as well because all departments operate differently, and I think they really, really need to understand. So possibly, they may have some ideas to get some additional funding or to be able to advocate, you know, as you stated, at the state capitol for themselves as well. So how soon you think you can get with those individuals to assist with them? You know, your team?
We can certainly schedule something as soon as possible. If it needs to be, as early as next week, we can do that. If it's something that we need to talk about this week, we can do that as well, but we will make ourselves available.
Well, thank you for making that public because I think we need to do that because I have, you know, realized that a lot of departments don't understand the process. They just feel like, you know, the county, because I'm learning coming from the city, the process is different. And you just have to, you know, understand that there is a different process for each government entity. So I think once you sit down with them sooner than later, that would be a help for them.
Please make sure.
Thank you so much.
I see that it is listed under the division summary with Parks and Rec and libraries are listed together. And you stated that last year FY '25 was 3.1 million, so it is still holding at that figure this year as well?
So the current is the 3.1? Yes, sir.
Okay. Benita, you come back just in case the board have some additional questions or comments.
Do we have more questions?
No, ma'am. You cannot, no, this, the public comment has ended. Okay, Commissioner Wilson? Any questions for Benita?
No, ma'am, I don't have any questions.
Just a couple. Commissioner Robinson.
No, but thank you for your diligence and creating the slides and making it very simple and understandable for everybody.
Commissioner Angler.
Just want to make sure, reiterate that everybody understands that this, there is not a millage rate increase associated with this. So I think that's just important to make sure that's put out there. And staff, thank y'all. Y'all work with us well, meet with us over several months, and appreciate your time and diligence. And thank you to the departments. I know it's not an easy ask for us to ask you to hold your budgets, and that can be difficult, but thank you to the staff and thank y'all for getting it together.
Commissioner Robinson.
Yes, I just want to reiterate that. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was a very smooth budget season. And I do want to reiterate, I think we said in one of our last workshops, that the judicial class and comp was not going to be done in time for this budget, but that it would be revisited at the mid-year budget. And so I do have a request with the mid-year budget that we actually do it a little earlier this year, if we could start in November or December so that we could have that in place in January. Thank you.
I too want to thank you all for the hard work that you did and for those departments, and probably all of the departments did not get all of your ask, but thank you for working with what you have to continue to maintain the level of service for our citizens.
With that, can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the 2025-26.
Got a motion in the second. All in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and Pillars of Henry County. Our next resolution is authorization for the chair to sign a Georgia Department of Transportation Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, or LMEG, for the local road assistance administration LRA funds. So this is our second year where the Georgia Governor and the legislature have included 250 million in local roadside, road assistance, or LRA for this budget, 2025. Last year, we received, we applied for this, and this is our second year. This is part of the LMEG, another form of LMEG. So this year, it's a little bit more on the LRA. We're looking at 3 million, there we go, $3,165,226.74. The good thing about this LRA, there's no matching fund, so it's 100% state-funded. Staff met with each commission district, and as you can see on the screen, on Commission District 1, we're looking at Lewin Forest subdivision. So basically, we're going to be doing every single road in that subdivision. Those are the roads. District 2, we're looking at Panola Woods subdivision. District 3, we're looking at Cotters Mill subdivision. District 4, the Glenn subdivision. District 5, Martha's Vineyard subdivision. Just want to make, let everybody know that the subdivisions that we picked the roads are really, really bad. We're looking in the 30s and 40s out of 100. So a brand-new paved road is 100, just like a class grade. This road that we, that has been picked or chosen, you're looking at 30s and 40s. That's, that's an F, right? So we are, we're thankful for, for the state to giving us this money, and we'll be glad to approve, you know, turn in our application and hopefully get that, the grant. And I will take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
I have any questions? No, ma'am.
Commissioner Robinson.
Chair, can you go back to District 2 because I could have swore I asked for one road to We talked about Spivey?
Yes, we did. We did talk about Spivey. We'll add to that list, Spivey.
Okay, just want to make it clear, we added Spivey Road. Okay.
We'll add Spivey to the list.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're correct. We did ask Spivey.
Okay, Commissioner Angler. Lewis. Okay. Well, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Got a motion in the second.
And Madam Chair, just because the public is viewing, I wanted Mr. Romero to speak to not the board just adding roads, how they're rated, how these roads are rated, so that the public that's not here understands it's not just the commissioner adding it, it's a road that has been identified as a lower-rated road. So if you could just speak to that, and then we'll make amended to add that road with no change to the dollar amount, correct?
Correct. There'll be no change in the dollar amount.
Thank you.
Thank you, county manager. So the county, every so often, which we actually have a new program coming up where the DOT has a company that they come and we stop this out to come and grade every single road in the county unincorporated. And based on that, that will give you a grade, right? They look at the length of the road, the cracks, the potholes, and they give a grade. And based on that information, and actually, that information is on the county website under, under the DOT. If you go DOT on the Henry County website, you go DOT, Department of Transportation, there's a road ratings. It clearly is on the main page, road ratings. Click there, citizens, if you want to know what your rate in your subdivision or, or a road. It could be Jonesboro Road, Eagles Landing. All those roads are not only subdivisions, but also county roads are, roads, grades are there. And what we try to do, we try to, of course, do the worst first and work our way up. And as the board knows, we already done two batches of resurfacing, and we have another one coming up for, well, actually, two coming up for board approval. We already beat out all of those roads, over 200 roads in the amount of over $26, $27 million worth of resurfacing. So that's coming up June the 3rd. We have our batch two of resurfacing, and June 17th is our third one. So you'll see a lot of, the good thing about it, Commissioners and Chair, is we have three different contractors. So you're going to see a lot of, a lot of paving this, this coming summer and fall.
And I just want to add to that, thank you, county manager. So basically, to be transparent, with this road, the city of Stockbridge annexed the area, right? So it's a small portion that the county has. So the Clayton County has done their portion, city of Stockbridge has done their portion, right? And with the annexation, it's kind of got overlooked. So it's, so with the grading, it shows that it needs to be done because it is a small portion that Henry County has. So that's why I inquired about that, and thank you for you and your team to make sure to go out and look and grade that. So if I can, I just wanted to, or Kevin, whoever wanted to amend the motion, to include Henry County's portion of Spivey Road to this list.
And we'll, we'll add it to the, to the application.
Yes. So I move.
All right. And motion in the second?
Second.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Burton Dibbons, if you will come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board and pillars of the community. SPOS staff is elated to present this agenda item to you this evening to approve the funding for the design services of Mount Carmel Road and North Mount Carmel Road. This will be an intersection improvement project located in District 5. Henry County purchased and solicited bids by issuing an RFQ for the design services of Mount Carmel at North Mount Carmel Road Intersection Improvement Project. Five proposals were received and reviewed by Henry County staff and professionals. Crow engineering scored the highest and provided a fee in the amount of $344,180. Funding for this project is available in the SPOS 6 District 5 project account. Staff recommends approval for the design services of Mount Carmel Road at North Mount Carmel Road in the amount of $344,180. This slide provides an illustration of a preliminary concept plan. This project will improve the current intersection by a realignment and enhancing visibility and safety. It will also enhance north-south connectivity as it will connect State Route 81 to State Route 138. That's considered to also be North Henry Parkway. And also, I will be remiss if I didn't mention that we just started to collect SPOS 6 collections on April the 1st, and prior to this meeting, we have already, this board has approved $26.2 million for SPOS-funded projects. So this indicates significant progress with the infrastructure improvements as designated in the SPOS program. And at this time, I will take, any questions?
Okay, any questions from the board?
I have a comment. Thank you, Burke. Can you go back to the previous slide? So, and I hope, hope my folks are watching. So that neighborhood, we see Yosemite Terrace and Rain jail Trail, that is the preserve at Rangel's. So some months ago, I met with the residents over there, and they were, they were very concerned because if you look at that little cul-de-sac straight to the north of what we're doing, that is an easement that is owned by the county. And that easement was, the road was originally designed to go straight through their neighborhood and which would effectively cut off the cul-de-sac on the left from the rest of the neighborhood. And so I'm really thankful that we are able to do this design, so I hope they're watching. And Mr. Watkins, I hope you're watching. This is what I committed to them to make sure that we would not cut a road right through the middle of their neighborhood and that we would still effectively make sure that we address the traffic issues right there at Mount Carmel, North Mount Carmel. So this is, this is definitely a win for the community. I'm really excited about it, and just thank you for the work that you're all doing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And with that, I would like to move to approve.
Got a motion? Got a motion in the second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Burke. Next item is planning a zoning, RZ 23-18, North Old.
Mr. Lam.
Mr. Cantor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, board members, and pillars of the community. The applicant is requesting a rezoning exactly of 115.08 acres from RA Residential Agricultural to MU Mixed Use for the purpose of single-family homes and commercial development. The subject property is highlighted in green. As you all can see on the zoning map, the surrounding area features a mix of residential, commercial, and mixed zoning use. According to the future land use map, the property is designated as village. That's a designation meant to encourage commercial development with residential components that support it. This proposal fits within that vision. Here's a boundary survey provided by the applicant as well as the conceptual plan. This includes 37.19 acres for commercial development and 77.89 acres for a 55-plus age-restricted residential community. All future development must meet COE standards at the time of permitting. Above, you will see elevations for not only residential, but for commercial as well. Again, this request is a rezoning from RA to MU. This was reviewed and approved by the Development of Regional Impact, DRI, by ARC with conditions. There will be up to 234 residential units for the residents 55 and older. The commercial component is set aside for 37.19 acres, and this does fall within the Highway Corridor Overlay District. This item is also consistent with the Village Plume designation. I would also like to mention that various departments did review the plans provided by the applicant, and they are on the screen as well. Their feedback helped shape the recommendation for the conditions presented this evening. Again, these are the elevations for residential. These are the elevations for commercial. On March 13th, 20, I'm sorry, these are the development, the department comments that we've received from staff. And I would like to mention that on March 13th, 2025, the zoning advisory board recommended approval with the following conditions. There are about 30 to 36 conditions for this property, and I would like to mention that condition number two should read the date of May 28th, 2025. And I'm happy to answer any questions you want me to have this evening.
Okay, just stand by. This is a public hearing for the comp amendment and rezoning at the same time.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, there is no comp amendment associated with this application.
Oh, okay, there's no comp amendment?
No, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong one. Okay. Okay, so this is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the board.
Good evening, Michelle Powell with Valon 3562, Haberhammett, Northlake, Tucker, Georgia 30084. I can't begin to tell you how excited we are about being before you all today with regards to this North Ola project. We've been working on this, I think, since 2021, 2022, in an effort to try and bring quality development, continue quality development along the North Ola corridor. Staff has already done a great job of pointing out the project, so I'll try to be brief in my comments. This is a mixed-use project and we are looking to set a standard of excellence along this North Ola community corridor. When we started out this project, you see the original site plan that we had. And with the direction of Commissioner Anglin, he said, "Think bigger, think better." And that's what we tried to do. So we went to this site plan, which is before you today, which is a mixture of senior housing at the top end of the project and a very robust commercial development corridor at the south end of the project. We initially started out with 169 single-family homes along with some duplexes and quads. All of those were replaced by 234 single-family homes. We started out with only five commercial out parcels. We now have over 216,000 square feet of commercial space and a redesigned amenity area. When we look at the villages at Ola for the adults 55 and older, that will be a residential gated community with walking trails, sidewalks, gated entry, also a golf court, golf cart community. We've already looked at some of the farmhouse elevations. And again, this will be an age-restricted community. We are proposing a swimming pool and clubhouse with tennis courts, pocket parks, golf cart path, walking trails, community pavilion, and there's also an existing lake that's on the property that the residents will be able to walk around. The minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet and we also have heated floor area of all the units at no less than 1,600 square feet. And just to point out that, for example, our minimum lot size is larger than the minimum lot size that is required at 4,750. So each senior will have a nice-sized lot and a nice-sized house with the minimum floor heated area at only 1,200 square feet. And we're providing a minimum of 1,600 square feet. With regards to the commercial area, it will be set up for not only big-bots retailers, but also we have, I believe, roughly nine out parcels along with the kind of courtyard area that we're gonna get a little bit more into, that we're really excited about, some of the features that are designed for that area. And with that, we do have a video. I'm hoping that it's going to come up. Kenta's gonna help us. If we could pause our time.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm gonna turn it over here to our architectural team.
Good evening. Jefferson Brown, Jefferson Architects.
Okay. Is there a sound affiliated with this? Okay, okay.
It's a privilege to work on this project. We spent a lot of time in the community looking for architectural elements that we thought represented the community. And we wanted to honor the community by bringing those elements in. You saw earlier, we had stone walls, we had wooden fences, and these architectural elements, even though these are commercial buildings, what we wanted to do was honor the architecture that we saw and with gables and different roof systems. And then we also took on this one at the end here, an opportunity to kind of do a farm-forward look where it gives hope and a forward feel, but also honoring the tradition of the community. It also acts as a buffer and a barrier to protect the children and families as they're playing on the lawn. And we also created these different gateways to move to and from the spaces. And then during rain days, you could occupy these spaces, nice days, you could go out here, have activities on the lawn. And then all the vendors that would be here on the property would be able to support. This is another opportunity. This section of the road right here could actually be closed for a state. It could be movie on the park, it could be a concert in the park. And you can see just by the scale of how much room there is. So we've dedicated a lot of space to community and outside. The architecture, the doors, if you go through the community, are influenced by what we saw in the community and around. So we tried to do everything we could that if you saw an element, you would think that would remind you of a particular space and home, so it would look familiar, it would be welcoming. It would be a space that you'd want to go to. We've set it up at night, you can see this boulevard approach here, this is at the beginning. Do you have any questions?
With that, we conclude our comments and save any time for anyone else who might want to speak in support otherwise. Thank you.
All right, just stand by. We're gonna finish the public comment first. Is there anyone, we set the clock, that would like to come and speak in opposition? Oh, favor, okay, in favor of the project, okay.
I know, it's shocking anyone would get up and support any new development. So Kevin, and, and I think it was Rocky I was talking to at the table at the meeting last week, about more farmhouse aesthetic for, for Henry County. This nailed it. This really, really nails the aesthetic that I think every single Henry County resident moved here for, which is that, that farm look and those beautiful fences. Can you remind us, though, is this built to rent or built to own? Okay, so it is built to own. And what is the price point? Come on, Dee.
Okay, well, we can't, we're not gonna answer questions during public comment.
Okay, well, so I'm just curious because it wasn't brought up.
You can make a public comment.
Yeah, it wasn't brought up what the price point is.
And we can, we can get them to come back and answer that.
Okay, I would appreciate that because we didn't find that out in planning and zoning either. But this does nail the aesthetic of the farmland look and the country feel. And, and I would love to see this more often than not as, as a resident here. Since we have to deal with developments occurring, it would be to our benefit to keep that country feel as much as we can in the county. And then we were also curious as to what businesses they were thinking of attracting. So thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Stills. Anyone else wishing to come to speak in our favor? Okay, Stephanie, if you would reset the clock and then we'll have anyone wishing to come to speak in opposition, we have a collective total of 10 minutes. Come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Dale Durants and I'm at 262 River Road in McDonough, in the Ola area. To get out of my area, there's a Publix on the opposite side of North Ola. Bunch of commercial restaurants, different things have already been built there, car wash. 81 is two-lane. Y'all put a red light there, that's good. But the three schools down the road on North Ola are gonna be tremendously affected by the increase in traffic. They, the 55, that's fine, they have children too. Now they say there's 5% rental. They're telling how many children, not to mention the increase in cars and the burden on the schools. So I have to adamantly, as in a year or two years ago, whenever this came up, y'all voted it down and set aside this proposal here. But you're gonna make a big mess at, at 81. It's already terrible traffic out there. You're just gonna make a big bottleneck.
For the interest of my time, my name is Connie Snow with Conserv Henry and I'm just gonna speak on all the developments because this is how I feel about everything that's being proposed tonight lately. We just recently received an F rating for our air quality. We have 27 schools spilling, we have issues with our water as it's been cited in the barge feasibility report, other Henry County water minutes, and there have been multiple fines at the EPD. Plus, we just had 17 people arrested for sex trafficking or participation in the last month in our county. While this is a good concept, continually changing things to mixed-use development and cramming in people in our community when our infrastructure isn't stable isn't a good idea. Who would want to live in a county with failing schools, poor air quality, and water contamination and water usages? Most of us want to sell now. It's sad to see us all want to leave. So with that being said, we're gonna become another big issue that John Ossoff just cited. Because eventually, when these homes don't sell, they're gonna become rentals. And we're already cited by John Ossoff, we're already having a high problem with that. So at what point do our leaders want to leave a legacy for our youth? Or do they want to leave a legacy for their developers? I ask that you take in consideration tonight for all developments on the agenda before you approve them and what the impact is and what the legacy that you want to leave. Because the legacy you currently have isn't looking good for our youth. Thank you.
It is since public comment. Commissioner Anglin, this is in your district and I'll turn it over to you.
So if I could ask just a couple folks to come forward to try to answer a couple questions. First, Mr. Dale had a question about the traffic in 81. Understand, I'm on that road almost all the time. I was eating last night at the 81 Grill out there. So Rocky, if you don't mind, please come up and address what's gonna be changing on 81 and the widening timeline that we have in place, taking it further out towards North Ola.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. So we, we actually have two projects on, on State Route 81. The first project is what we call Phase One, which is basically from Lemon Street all the way to Mon, Mon Bethany, sorry, too many roads in my mind, Bethany Road. It's about three miles long. We actually acquired rider on that, we're pretty much done with it. We're looking at, this is a JTA project with Henry County. We're looking at bidding it out this November, once JTA gives the approval to let it for November. So that's Phase One. The next phase is from Bethany, too many phrases, from, from Bethany, yeah, Bethany.
From Bethany. On the way out to Kiss Ferry.
Yes, to Kiss Ferry. And that's a little bit longer, it's about three and a half miles long. It's also a widening road, four-lane divided. And that one is in the, we just, actually it's a SLO Six project. And we do start, we actually did the kickoff on that last month on the design. That's also a project that is receiving FEROM funds for the design. So you're going through the federal process, design-wise, this program will be about three years to three and a half years, then we'll start roadway and then construction. So you're looking at starting construction about seven years unless, you know, unless we put it on a different program to speed it up. But it is a state road. I just want to mention that if the county, like we are taking, we are, we're making this happening. We're not waiting for the state to, to help us out on, on all these problems that, on traffic-wise. So the county is putting the skin in the game and getting this, this done.
Thank you, Rocky. We'll make sure we address that question for Mr. Dale and those widening projects that we got going on out there. Concerning the schools, Connie had a question about that or a comment, I guess. That was extremely important to me. I've got a son that goes out there to Ola and has been a student there for years, which is why we moved to the age-restricted out in this neighborhood. When I, when this project first started, Miss Val may remember, I mean, it's been four years essentially. And this was multi-use in the flume prior to me being here on the board in the future land use map. When we were meeting originally, they were wanting at least three different uses. So with that being said, we removed anything that's multi-use and that's true for District Three. There's no multifamily in District Three, and I made that very clear, which is why we have multi-use here, which means we have to have at least two uses. So we got the commercial and then we've got the age-restricted. With that, I asked for more commercial. And the reason we asked for more commercial on here is to help reduce down the traffic on 81 and the trips that we're seeing towards the interstate and towards the city of McDonough. I want to applaud y'all for hiring the Jefferson Group and them bringing in the Ola community into the conversation. They went out as architects and designers and interviewed folks in the Ola community, stopped by, took pictures, took those things and brought them back to the project. This same concept fits what we're trying to do in North Ola with the master plan where that moratorium was originally put in place. So thank you for bringing that design work to our community, which emulates what we see within Ola. With that, there was a question about rental. I did not mean to interrupt, public comment with that. It is a 5% rental clause in there. With that being said, it is, I just want to reiterate, it is age-restricted to minimize the impact on the school. With that, I want to say thank you for Ola being patient. And after four years, I think we have a product that we can agree upon. And thank y'all for y'all's time with meeting with the community also. Michelle.
Commissioner Wilson, go ahead.
Dee, I'd just probably. So, and I say that, former Commissioner Barnes was talking some of the similar, similar age-restricted, invite to see you, bring it to light. I have one request. With, with these houses being so close and they've been seniors, don't allow any vinyl product at all to be used on the house for soffits or any other they'll have to use. Say use a hardy plank or some concrete siding for the soffits, don't allow vinyl at all. This is a, it's something for the fire department because anytime that a grill or something catches on fire outside, the first thing that melts is a soffit. Then the fire winds up in attic and these things are not sprinkled. So that would be my only request to add for the conditions.
That it, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Well, I just want to say this is an outstanding product because I had two in District Two, I'm looking for 55 and older. So Dee, I think I'm gonna have to use your language when staff is coming to me, is think big. I guess that's, I'm not using the right words here. So hopefully, when the developers are coming, we're looking for quality development such as this in our community here in Henry County. I know some of the cities, they have different things that they want, but for, as I know, what I'm looking for as a county commissioner is quality development such as this when it comes to our 55 and older community. So hopefully, everyone who's been trying to reach out understands that this is what we're looking for and this is an outstanding development. So kudos to you, sir.
No, I just wanted to, everybody loved to review some of the plans some time ago. Commissioner Anglin, very well done. I absolutely love the commercial part. And I know Turney Battle was talking about community, like, and an architect about community. So that is huge with me. So I love the fact that people will be able to congregate together, get to know their neighbors and, and enjoy what Henry County is really all about, which is, is family and community.
neighbors, and enjoy what Henry County is really all about, which is family and community. So very well done, thank you.
It's very nice product. I think it's gonna be good for the community, and my hat's off to the fifty-five and above that has elementary-age kids.
Can, can I ask Michelle to come up right fast?
Sure thing. I turned it over to you.
To ask, when I review this, the first one is the tennis courts.
Yes.
Is there a way for us to make language where we can make those either tennis courts and/or pickleball courts, which may be most appropriate for that neighborhood?
Absolutely.
Community?
Absolutely.
There's pickleball there. And is the no-vinyl product good with y'all as well? In the soffits?
On the sides?
Yes.
Okay. Also, I mentioned the Jefferson Group, I just wanna, not try to give plugs, but most folks will know them from their work they've done at Trillith. I think that's very important, because y'all, we identify Trillith with the work that y'all have done. So thank you for coming to Henry County, thank you for this being your first project. Appreciate that and the hard work y'all did. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Commissioner? Price point? The price points will be in the mid-threes and up for seniors, for the housing. And there's also one additional change that I mentioned to staff. In condition number twelve, there's a mention of compliance with the general layout as per the conceptual plan dated May eighth, 2023. We'd like to change that to the plan that was presented at today's meeting, and that would be consistent with the other references within the, within the conditions. And staff has indicated that.
Kansas Tucson, were you good with that change? We're good with that change. And I did know the price, I just wanted to make sure I was verified, prices have changed due to material costs. And Anne, you can move to Ola. It's a great community.
I might sit down.
With that, I'm gonna stop that right there. I make a motion that we go ahead and approve.
You got a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Oh, you had a question, I'm sorry.
You added the condition about the vinyl.
Oh, I thought that was.
She did.
It did put that in there.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, you got my vote.
Okay. Okay, we're not gonna continue to have outbursts. Where's our police officers at that's working this thing? Any more outbursts, remove the people from the meeting. I'm not going to have it. We're gonna be respectful in my board meetings. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members and Pillars of the Community. The applicant before you is requesting to rezon approximately twenty-two point one nine acres from C-Three Highway Commercial to R.M. multifamily residential. The property is located north of Highway twenty-eight-one west and east of McDonough Parkway and landline one fifty-seven. As you all can see, the property is highlighted in green on the map before you. The area around the sites are consistent with residential uses, commercial zoning, and portions within the city of McDonough. The future land use map designates the area as urban residential, which supports a range from four to twelve dwelling units per acre. The proposed development achieves a net density of ten point six-two units per acre, which is within that range. The boundary survey confirms the property consists of twenty-two point one nine acres. The conceptual plan, site plan proposes the townhome community, and this layout must meet all development standards at the time of permitting. These are the comments from various departments that we've received. Above, you will see the elevations proposed by the applicant. The rezoning is going to be from C-Three to R.M. for a total of one hundred forty-nine units for townhome community. I would like to note that this property was rezoned in nineteen ninety-three from R.A. to C-Three, and there were no conditions found for this property, and there was no development since this rezoning. The proposed net density is ten point six-two dwelling units per acre, is consistent with the future land use map designation, and this development must comply with the highway corridor overlay district. These are still the few elevations provided by the applicant. On March thirteenth, 2025, the Zone Advisory Board did recommend approval with conditions, since staff has made additional conditions, and I am happy to answer any questions you all may have this evening. Yes, ma'am.
So this is a public meeting, those wishing to speak in favor have a collective total of ten minutes.
Michelle, about longer, five sixty-two, Habershamet, Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. Staff has already provided a very great overview of the project in general. We can see here that the site is immediately south of a self-storage facility, which is located immediately above called Compass Self-Storage. We are surrounded by kind of a mixture of housing types, the Sable Chase Apartments, the Eagles Lake subdivision, we've got Amber Chase Apartments above, Meadowlark, some townhomes at Sundance Creek, along with the Creek Station subdivision. I think what's most important is that we know that the land use change to urban residential, I believe that's what it's called, urban residential, does not support the current C-one, C-three zoning that the property currently has designated. So we are actually, with the rezoning to R.M., bringing the property into conformity with what the land use plan calls for. The project, as indicated, will be one hundred and forty-nine units. We've got twenty-two rear-loaded units, which are the ones that are facing the right-of-way. We thought that was very important in our discussions with Commissioner Lewis, that we made sure that there was a nice affect as you're coming along McDonough Parkway, so that you could see kind of the beauty of the overall project. Throughout, we've got a stream buffer, which we are abiding by the stream buffer regulations. We are providing for an amenity area that will include a pool and cabana, in addition to walking trails within the community. There has been a right-of-way taking already with regards to the project. One of the things that we are asking for in the staff report to be amended is number twelve in the condition in which there is reference to a fifty-five-foot-wide enhanced landscape strip. That strip was twenty feet when we were before the planning commission, we think that that was kind of erroneous, that it was increased to fifty feet. We don't feel that that is actually necessary, it is not a requirement under the code, and we are abiding, again, the self-storage facility, which is right above, where that twenty feet would be along with along the perimeter sides of the site. Again, with regards to the amenity areas, you can see we've got a dog park, we've got the pool and cabana area, we've got walking trails, as well as the fire pit area. One of the things in condition fourteen talked about a paved asphalt walking trail, we would ask that that be considered as more of crush-and-run, or some other surface that would be in alignment with what you would typically see in more of a park environment. Our concern is that the HOA with the number of units that we have will be responsible for all of the maintenance and upkeep of these areas, and have some concern about the asphalt-paved path, that that would add more expense in maintenance and upkeep, whereas the crush-and-run would be something that would last considerably longer. These are the elevations, we've worked hard on those to make sure that we gave more of a farmhouse look to this townhome community. It will be a fee-simple townhome community, and to the extent there's any rental restrictions, we are certainly open to that. But the main thing is that it is a fee-simple townhome community, is not intended for a rental community. Again, this shows the right-of-way improvements have been made already in the area, along with the road widening along McDonough Parkway. We believe that this is an appropriate use for the property, that will raise and continue to raise values within the area. We are not far from the McDonough marketplace, and these units will be selling between three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand, which is what is anticipated, and the minimum unit size is seventeen hundred square feet. So with that, we would respectfully request approval of the application. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone, Stephanie, reset the clock, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name and address.
Greetings, Board, Angie Collins, Crystal Lake Golf and Country Club Community. And I have to say, Commissioner Anglin, you have raised the bar. I mean, I was very pleased with what I saw. With that said, this looks pretty good, honestly. It looks better than what I was expecting. And I think by taking the steps now and requiring developers to use the best materials, it really can set the tone for what Henry County expects. What I would like to know is the materials that are gonna be used, I'd like to see something like some bricks, something that's gonna be solid. I'd like to see, know how much, how many, what's the percentage of renters that are gonna be allowed? Because that does impact the overall community. Because we really want to work together, and we want to draw people who are going to contribute positively, and so one of the concerns is that the price point, it seems like three fifty, four hundred thousand, I wanna see what you're getting. I think if that's what they're asking, maybe we should also consider asking for fencing the community, have an gated community. But other than that, I have to say, I've been somewhat pleasantly surprised this evening. So that's what I have to say for now, because the amenities that were added, it gives people something to do for the money that they're paying. You don't wanna just pay a lot of money and then have a community where there's nothing to do but look at your neighbor's garage. So I was glad to see that they added the pools, the walking trails. The materials are one of the things that I'm concerned about, so I'd like to have some specifics on that. But right now, I gotta say, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Anyone else coming to speak in opposition?
Connie Snow, four twenty-six, Chase Marion Way, and I'm with Conserv Henry. Again, the previous development, I thought it was great as well. I think this one's decent as well, but we have some infrastructure problems. I do believe this water letter's outdated, and I do believe the previous water letter was outdated by two years. If it isn't that one, it's the next development on there. Going back to my concerns, we have an F rating for air quality, twenty schools filling. While we may have a fifty-five-year-old community in North Ola, we still have twenty-seven schools filling, adding more people here, it's gonna cause more challenges. We really do need to fix our infrastructure. Again, we have EPD fines for our water. Have we looked into any of that? How much is the developers putting into our water infrastructure, just out of curiosity? Does anybody know that, off the top of their head? Probably not? Okay. I just want you guys to take into consideration what the impact is of our community. It's not so much these developments, it's all the ones you've already improved, that are really hitting us hard. We're already being, making, we're making the news, we've had issues where we've been flagged for overcharging for impact fees, and we as citizens have to pay that back as taxpayers. And there are decisions that are being made that are impacting the owners of this county as a whole. So, I mean, you can roll your eyes all you want, this is not an outburst, so this is a public comment, can't legally be arrested for that. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Harrell and Vice Chair, and our Henry County Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
I am Councilwoman Vanessa Thomas, City of McDonough at Large. And first of all, I just wanna let you know that I'm not always against new bills, but what I do like to see is smart growth. Coming out of my subdivision, across the street is Henry County, and I see things popping up over there without not knowing what they are. I see that we're doing a lot of residentials right now, and I'd like to recommend that we just kind of slow the growth down, perhaps a moratorium in District Five for a few months or so. This is, this is getting out of hand with all of these apartments and townhomes and all this being built without the infrastructure. And I know that we have some streets that we're in the process of rebuilding or widening the roads, and maybe some of your, some of the staff could perhaps talk about how the roads are going to affect each one of these next five bills in District Five. But my main concern is that there's a lot of growth going on right now without the infrastructure to accommodate it, and I'd like to recommend that a moratorium be placed in District Five until such time that we are able to accommodate the growth. Thank you.
Okay, Stephanie, thank you. Public comment ended. Commissioner Lewis, this is in your district.
Yes, thank you. And if Attorney Battle could come back up. And I did wanna address a few things, comments, especially from Councilwoman Thomas. I know you were at the City of McDonough, Councilwoman Thomas, and so with this particular project, matter of fact, if Taylor, if you can go back to the site plan that shows the highways.
I think right there shows all the highway improvement.
So if you look on each side of this particular project, we have the widening of twenty-eight-one, and we also have the widening of McDonough Parkway, which is actually a joint project between Henry County and the City of McDonough, which you are a council member of. So this is a joint project between our two governments, so I would think that you know that we are working together to improve the road right in front of this particular project. Also, a couple of meetings ago, we actually enacted a moratorium for the entire county for residential zoning. For six months, that is correct. So we have already enacted a moratorium for the entire county, not just District Five. And I already have a moratorium on the west side of District Five for an airport master plan that has already been in effect for six months and will continue for another six months. So just to address your particulars concerns, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, first of all, that we are working together with you, the City of McDonough, to make sure that we are improving our roads, so thank you for that. Just going to this particular project, I wanna first thank Attorney Battle. You are delivering. I just wanna say that to you particularly. You know, sometimes the back and forth between the Commissioners and applicants or developers, it can get a little testy. What we're trying to do as far as setting the standard, and I think all of the Commissioners up here, we're trying to set a standard for Henry County, and Ms. Collins alluded to that. You know, we have been diligent, and I know you and I have been for the last two years, we've been going back and forth, and one thing you have heard me consistently say is, we have to upgrade the standards for what we're building in Henry County. And I just wanna say thank you, because I think you are really working with your client -- clients to make sure that they are delivering that. So this project is a good project. As Ms. Collins alluded, we have healthy amenities. I attended a Housing Affordability Summit last week, and I know, you know, my first homeowner, my wife and I bought, as a starter home, it was $170,000. They don't exist anymore.
Not at all.
So, you know, as crazy as it may sound, $350,000 is actually the entry point. We were at a Housing Affordability Summit, and they literally talked about $350,000 being the entry point for all markets. So this is, like I said, as crazy as it may sound, this is on the low end. But the thing is, we want to make sure that we have quality developments, and I think that this fits this bill. As to the two particular conditions you were talking about, 12 and 14, condition number 12, at ZAB, it was a 20-foot buffer, and it was changed after, so I don't have a problem with that because of, we are already taken right away for the joint project with the City of McDonough. And also with condition 14, that makes sense, because there's no need to add expense to the homeowners of this particular subdivision with doing asphalt, which is something that they will have to upkeep and will make their HOA fees probably a little bit higher than what it's warranted. So I have no problems with changing those two particular conditions. With that being said, unless I have any comments from my commissioners.
I want the County Manager, Sherry, to address the comment that was made about taxpayers having to pay back impact fees. Will you address that? Because that is false information, and I'm tired of people putting out false information.
So Madam Chair, in the month of February, the Board of Commissioners received notification that the impact fees, as determined by methodology report that was conducted by an outside consultant, were not correct. And as a result, we were remanded by the Superior Court Judge at that time to reduce our impact fees back to the amount from, it was a $7,000 amount, back to $1,661.50. The county objects to that. We are vigorously pursuing it through the legal actions, but impact fees are paid by builders or individuals that are seeking building permits for some type of construction, and this is for residential only. As of today, the budget that was presented to you all has not impacted taxpayers at all. The impact fees are not paid by anyone other than anyone seeking to obtain a building permit. The only one that loses at this point is the residents, because the impact fee was reduced. And that typically helps us with capital projects like road infrastructure, parks and recreation, but we did not provide to you all or ask the board to pass that loss on to the taxpayers. We are vigorously pursuing this case, and we hope that the county will prevail. And I think it's important that you ask that question, because one of the things that the library mentioned was the amount of money that they're not receiving. And because the impact fees were reduced, the allocation that would have gone to the library, to those key services like police, fire, parks and recreation, library, those funds are now reduced. And so I don't know what more information we can put out, but I assure you that the impact fees is not being passed on to our taxpayers. Yes, we do have legal fees, but this board also has a legal fee budget that we will provide to any resident of the county to outline how those expenses are made. There has been no budget amendments made by this board or recommended from our budget team or from my office to add any increased fees to the county attorney's budget to handle this litigation. And so we will continue to keep you all abreast, and because it is a legal matter, we are limited on, you know, what we can say. But to your point, there has been no budget amendments, allocations, tax increases for this impact fee. This litigation is just like every other litigation that we vigorously pursue. And so it is what it is, but we will continue to keep you all abreast. And if you'd like, once we are able to share additional information, we can present something formal to this board and for the public that is viewing online and that is here present tonight.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure the public understands that impact fees are paid by the developer, by the person that's building the project. It does not come out your tax dollars, you're not taxed on it. So to say that the taxpayers are going to have to pay it back is incorrect, false information.
And the county did hire an independent consultant to develop the methodology report which determined what the dollar amount should have been, or should be.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, do you have any questions with regards to the project?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Okay.
Okay.
One called, kind of piggybacked what Kevin said a second ago. We work as commissioners to work with our city and to make sure that the information is absolutely correct. And with that being said, Councilwoman Vanessa, I understand your concerns, but what's more concerning to me is the fact that in 2024, there was a moratorium on Northola. Early in '25, we have another moratorium for Kellytown. There's also a moratorium at the airport, and then we call for an entire moratorium on the entire county. And as a city councilwoman, you appear to be unaware of that. That's concerning. Also, you were criticizing us about the growth. With that, I will say, as you go down this road, there are two subdivisions that are in the city, as I drive home every day, that y'all have just approved, which is one on the right and one on the left on Hampton Street. That's my only comment.
I would just like to say thank you to General Manager Tony Cornell and the Henry County Water Authority, because I know references have been made to water and water quality. I would encourage, and I don't know if this is possible or not, citizens to take his citizens' water department class. I have a tour of the facilities, the waste treatment as well as the water treatment plants. It's amazing operation that they have. In fact, when I went to Tussle Hall, they were awarded April the 9th of last year as the best operated plant. So I want to assure the citizens that the water that we drink and the water quality that we have is top-notch, and we have a great and amazing Henry County Water Authority. So I just wanted to give shout-outs to Tony and his team.
I just wanted to, one last thing before I make a motion. Recently, it's been shared on social media about the number of corporate rentals in Henry County, and I think people do that to sensationalize it. Henry County has one of the highest homeownership rates in the entire metro Atlanta. We are currently number four out of 21 counties in the metro region with homeownership. The only counties that have better homeownership rates than us are Cherokee County, Forsyth County, and Fayette County. So our current homeownership rate in Henry County is 75%. It is very healthy. We have a very healthy homeownership rate. In District 5 specifically, we have a 77% homeownership rate. My goal is to make that 80%. In the last three years, the homeownership rate in Henry County has gone from 72% to 75%. So our homeownership rate is increasing. So I just want to say that, you know, a lot of times, you know, we take a lot of flak, we sign up for it, I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, it does get a little disconcerting sometimes when people purposefully throw misinformation out there, and so, you know, a lot of times, we want to correct that. And so I did want to take the time tonight to correct that. We are trying to increase the standards for development in Henry County. We are trying to increase homeownership in Henry County, and we work very hard as a As a board, we work together very well, and so, you know, I love working with my colleagues, and I love the efforts that we are trying to make this county better. With that being said, I'll get off my soapbox, and I move to approve this resolution for this development with the changes to number 12 and number 14 conditions.
I second, okay. You second. And we love you, too.
So without a motion, you second it, Commissioner Price. And I just want to say, before I call for the vote, it's only 7% of Henry County that is the corporate or the rental. So 7%, yeah, we may be the highest in the metro, but 7% is still a low percentage, it's under 10. So, you know, I'm just tired of all of the misinformation that people are putting out here, trying to validate themselves.
Question, the rental cap is 5%?
I believe so.
It's actually says 10, but we're okay if it's 5%.
5%, 5%. Okay. So with that amendment to 5% on the rental.
5%.
That's condition 17.
Thank you.
You got that, Stephanie? Got a motion and a second. If no further discussion, all in favor. Those that oppose, motion carries.
So this is the one that's, we're doing the comp amendment NRZ together?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members and pillars of the Henry County community. The item before you is a property located on Highway 81 along Lovejoy Road, east of Highway 1941. Subject property is zoned RA, residential agricultural, with a future land use map designation split between low-density mixed-use, medium-density suburban, and high-density suburban. Mixed-use is that purple, medium is in that yellow, and the high-density is in that orange. The rezoning request before you is to rezone these three properties, from RA, residential agricultural, to RS, residential suburban, 89.16 plus or minus acres. The comprehensive plan amendment request before you tonight is only for two of those properties, 38.84 plus or minus acres. The request is to modify and amend the comprehensive plan and future land use map designation from the highlighted portion shown here, from low-density mixed-use and medium-density suburban to high-density suburban. Here is the site plan that was provided by the applicant with elevations to follow. Site plan indicates those town home units on the west side and single-family detached on the remaining two portions. And some elevations submitted by the applicant, townhomes here, and some single-family. Here are some comments that we've received from various departments, including fire, stormwater, DOT, school board, police, and fire. The future land use map designations and density thresholds of the property are as follows. Once again, I'll go back quickly to this map. That purple being that low-density mixed-use, up to eight dwelling units per acre. Medium in that yellow, up to four dwelling units per acre. High-density up to eight. The applicant is requesting for the 38.84 plus or minus acres amendment to that future land use map to fall in line with the southern portion at high-density suburban, showing it in orange. The associated rezoning request for the remaining portion, in total 89 acres, is RA residential to RS residential suburban for that mixed townhome and single-family. 353 lots in total, 202 single-family, and 151 townhomes with a proposed density of 4.79 dwelling units per acre. In total, the density threshold of some of those other designations were up to eight. This is that 4.74, so significantly below what some of those other portions would be able to accommodate. Proposed development is located within that highway corridor overlay district, and would need to meet those standards. Property would also need to meet and comply with the multifamily design standards. Again, despite the supported density thresholds of that low-density mixed-use and the high-density suburban designations, the proposed development with 4.74 is well below those density maxims. Rather than have those three future land use map designations, staff felt it appropriate to assign all properties one designation. If developed individually with the existing future land use map designations, the unit count and density could be close to double what the applicant is proposing. So again, if developed today, rather, you know, going through the rezoning process, if developed separately, unit count and density could be double. With all that being said, staff at the March 13th, 2025 zoning advisory board meeting, staff did recommend approval of the applicant's request to modify future land use map designation of the 38 acres from low-density mixed-use and medium-density suburban to high-density suburban. The zoning advisory board at that meeting did recommend denial. Staff, however, still maintains our original recommendation of approval. Similarly, staff did recommend approval at that meeting for the zoning, the rezoning request RA to RS. The zoning advisory board did recommend denial, however, staff does, maintains that recommendation of approval with the following conditions. I'll note now that the rental cap that staff has recommended is a 10%. Also like to note to modify condition eight, which references the site plan, that language kind of in that middle there, those located in the site plan titled Conceptual Plan for Bond Property, revised May 4, I'm sorry, March 4, 2024. We would use, instead modify that language to be akin to this condition two here, this tying it to the site plan that was presented here tonight, May 28. With that being said, that does conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
We'll take questions after public hearing. This is a public hearing. Those wishing to come speak in favor of the project, including the applicant, please come forward.
Good evening again. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, 30084. Staff has already indicated the location of the proposed project near Highway 1941 and Highway 81. I think he's done an excellent job of explaining what the land use change request is to high-density residential and how that impacts with regards to the density. We are seeking the rezoning from RA to RS. When we look at the site plan, there's been a lot of discussion and dialogue, particularly with Commissioner Lewis, with regards to the project. We wanted to have something that provided some balance with regards to the site, particularly coming off of Highway 1941. We are behind kind of the area in front. You will see that there's two parcels that abut Highway 1981 that are still available for some type of commercial or mixed-use type development. We are behind that site, and we feel that this provides a suitable transition into the single-family detached units that we are showing on our plan. We've worked very hard, particularly Liberty, and I'm going to give hats off to them. They have come back after suggestions that they needed to provide a different quality-type product, a different look. They have risen to that occasion and really were very thoughtful about the layout on this particular project. With regards to the townhome side, sorry, we'll start with the single-family detached side. Those lots are going to be 7,260 square feet minimums. With regards to the overall project, there's 199 of those units. We went with that modern farmhouse exterior look. They put a lot of thought into the product that they are showing. You can see even just from the garage doors, a more upscale look with the window panes within the garage doors, which a lot of developers are still kind of using that bit. garage doors, which, um, a lot of developers are still kind of using that big white blank, um, garage door look, but they, um, really took, um, the advice that was given, um, from the commissioner, from staff, um, to upgrade those things. Um, we've also got both, um, ranch style homes as well as two-story homes, um, to accommodate those who may want to live on a single story. And you can see a mixture of different textures. Um, we think that, um, we certainly don't want monotony. Um, a lot of the developers have monotony rules. We feel like, um, these are not necessarily custom homes, but they certainly give a different feel and flavor when you're looking at the different home styles that will be within this community. So when you come through, you won't feel like you're looking at all the same homes multiple times. With regards to the amenities on the, um, single family side, we've got the swimming pool with a clubhouse. We've got pickleball courts, um, pocket parks, um, with pavilions, um, the playground and dog park. We have passive park, um, with walking trails and a pocket park, um, with playground and pavilion. And I point that out, and I'll go back to the site plan, um, that those are interspersed throughout the community, um, on the single family detached side. We've got, um, multiple locations, um, where we've got the pool at the entrance with the pickleball courts as you're coming in, um, off to the, um, west, the, the, the east side of the project. Um, but within the interior, there's also the pocket parks, the dog parks, um, within, um, the interior of the community for walkability purposes. And we anticipate the price points, um, on those homes, um, starting in the, um, four hundreds and up for, um, the single family detached homes. With regards to the cluster home community, um, we actually went with a different concept with regards to that. Instead of, um, a lot of the times you'll see on the town home units that you will have, um, six or eight units together, um, we have cut that down to no more than four units in any building grouping. Uh, we think that that, um, provided for a different kind of flow and affect within the community. We've got a hundred and twenty-four units, again, with no more than four units in any one building grouping. Um, these units are twenty-four feet in width. Um, they are actually a minimum of, um, eighteen hundred square feet, so it's a fairly sizable, um, unit. Um, twenty-foot rear yards. We've got a pavilion, um, playground and dog park amenities, um, and sidewalks throughout the community, um, as shown. And these are some of the elevations, again, looking at more of a farmhouse look. And even here with, um, the garage doors, um, following kind of that, um, plan. Um, again, um, when we look at the dimensional requirements, um, the minimum lot size, um, we are exceeding that. Um, the minimum lot size under RS is four thousand seven fifty. Um, our minimum lot size is seven thousand two hundred and sixty for the single family detached homes. Um, and again, the town home minimum square footage is twelve hundred square feet. We are providing eighteen hundred square feet, um, for the town home units. People have differing tastes, um, with regards to living experiences. There are many people who enjoy living in a single family detached home and having all the grass around to cut and all the other extras, but there are many people, um, particularly, um, younger people, some older, um, folks as well, who prefer the town home, um, type environment where they don't have to worry about cutting as much grass and doing as much maintenance, um, and that that maintenance is shared. All of these will have a mandatory HOA. Um, right now, the staff has shown a ten percent rental restriction. I'm sure that my client is okay. Um, if that is, uh, reduced to five percent, which seems to be, um, the new norm. Um, and so we are very excited about this project and the opportunity to continue to do amazing work in Henry County. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the project? Okay. We said, um, Stephanie, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the project, please come forward.
Uh, and I'd like to make the comment that because we're hearing the comprehensive plan and the rezoning together, public comment would be, uh, allowed twenty minutes.
Well, nobody else came up for it, so.
Certainly.
Public comment now. So if it goes over that, then we'll deal with it.
Greetings Board. Angie Collins, Crystal Lake Golf and Country Club Community. Um, I want to say by, uh, having the participation that we do have with individuals coming out to the meetings, I do believe that that has caused every developer that has coming before you all to really step up their game, and I'm glad to see that. I think by making strict guidelines, that will only enhance the quality of life, making Henry County a more desirable end of, uh, location for people that want to live here. I love the fact that the amenities, because that was one of the things that I was specifically looking for, is what amenities were included. And, um, with that said, I think it was the last meeting I was out at, there was, uh, the implication that, you know, some people just won't be happy no matter what you do. And that implication was actually quite offensive, because when you, as a, uh, citizen, are taking time out of your schedule to come and speak, it's for the betterment of the county. Because what we want to do is, when a building is put in place, that's permanent. And if it's a low income or lower quality building, that's going to stay there forever, for several, several years. And so for those of us that are coming out here, it's not because we don't have anything to do. It's not like this is a good time in the city. It's specifically because we want to make sure that the Henry County that we love is a Henry County that we can be proud of. Um, so when you're, you're asking, um, top dollar for some of these homes, and I understand, uh, I think my first town home was a couple of hundred, maybe two hundred thousand up in Chicago area, but, uh, you want to give the people something for their money, not just a house with, uh, looking at your neighbor's garage. So that's why I think it was specifically with, uh, the pickleball court was mentioned. And I'm glad to see that, because that seems to be the thing now that's popular. But, um, placement makes a difference, because if you place it in the center, if you do a quick, uh, AI search or Google search, you will see that when it's in the center, it disrupts several households. But when it's on the outskirts, it gives the community something to do, and it's a nice amenity to have. So I just wanted to make sure that was understood, because there was, there seemed to be some confusion about that. No one is against smart growth. And when you look at where we are in Henry County, you have a county that is half an hour from the largest airport in the country. You have a county that is not that far from the city, close enough, but not too close. And so, again, when you're, you're taking time to come out to these meetings, it's because you care. And I care about what's going to take place in my community. I care about my long-term property value. So I want to applaud everyone that comes out here, because, believe me, there are a lot of people who do want to come, but because of, you know, getting dark outside and other restrictions, they're not able to. But we, uh, definitely are pleased to see what is happening with what these builders, what these developers are proposing. Now, one of the things that I would say with the town home that I would like to see, I know when I owned my town home, there was some type of border between townhomes, some kind of fencing, some type of shrubbery, something so that you could have a bit of privacy. I think that needs to be added as well. Um, the townhomes that were presented, they kind of looked a little cookie cutter to me. They were a little bland. So if anything, I'd like to see, especially that one in the lower, uh, right-hand corner, it just looks like a box to me. But I'd like to see something done with that, if possible. Uh, let's see what else did I have here? Um, the pricing, I guess that's, you know, that's just the standard pricing, but yeah, that, that, that was it. And I, I do feel that it is because of the individuals that are taking time out to demand more, we get more. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Connie Snow, Constable Henry. Um, again, I'm all about smart growth too. I'm not against every development like you all think, but I want to clear up some misconceptions, uh, regarding those impact fees. While we're still waiting for the case settle, eventually it's going to come out of some funding, and that funding eventually does impact your taxpayer. So if that's a true statement. I also wanted to correct a statement that was made at a previous meeting about a few weeks ago, that our schools were failing due to special needs or disability students. That's not a true fact. That was something our chair has stated. And again, this water letter's outdated. It's about a year expired, along with the others for this development again tonight, so we do have water issues. Hope you take that all to heed. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners. This is Councilwoman Vanessa Thomas again. First of all, I want to maybe apologize. It seemed like I perhaps maybe have given you all a indication that I was condescending in my comments or something to that effect, but I, but I was not trying to be, and I do apologize for that. But, um, what I do like to bring to your attention, you mentioned about being under a moratorium. Are you currently still under a moratorium?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I'm a little confused. To, to me, a moratorium, now, the way I looked at a moratorium when we had ours is that we did not even consider any of these, these bills. Are you all, are you all under moratorium for buildings? The, the, you know, for, for new bills? Is, is that what it is?
I think it works the same in McDonough, but whatever you already have in queue, you have to legally hear it. When we instituted our moratorium, we still had about thirty cases pending that we have to legally hear. So the moratorium will be for six months forward, no zoning applications for residential. So, but we have to legally hear what we have already, people have already submitted.
Okay. Well, I was not aware of that, because to me, you know, we're not, we were not listening to any, any, um, cases, so.
I think you're bound.
So I do, so I do apologize, apologize on that, on that part. Um, but the comprehensive plan, it seems like they're, they're wanting to amend that. I don't know how you all feel about wanting to amend your comprehensive plan. Um, you know, that is something that, well, personally, to me, that's something that, that, that I probably would not want to do. So I just want to bring that to your attention as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that ends public comment. Um, I have some questions with regards to, um, the comp plan amendment. What was the reasoning for, I'm trying to understand the reasoning for the comp plan amendment?
Yes. So the proposed development and the proposed density is four point seven four dwelling units per acre net. Um, that middle portion has a future land use map designation of medium density, which would, uh, allow up to four dwelling units per acre. So there's a discrepancy of the point seven four dwelling units per acre, um, net. The purpose of the comprehensive plan, uh, prior to any permit, I'm sorry, prior to any rezoning application, uh, the applicant team meets with staff to discuss the request, kind of provides, uh, expectations and standards during this process. Um, that is the pre-application meeting. At that pre-application meeting, uh, staff felt it necessary to have the entire development under one future land use map designation. In this event, uh, it would be that high density, uh, suburban designation. Um, staff also considered the density thresholds of each respective, uh, each respective parcel. And with the request to that high density, with the submitted site plan, the densities that we saw with the proposed, the four point seven four, um, could be near doubled if the property were to be developed as three separate developments. So rather than have that high density in this, in this area, uh, each individual development with different standards and, and whatnot, uh, we felt it necessary to compile it into one development with that high density suburban future land use map designation.
So, Madam Chair, also, when we originally did the comp plan amendment, or comp plan, excuse me, uh, we, staff was unaware that the, the owner owns all three properties. There's one single owner for all three different properties. So, uh, we thought it best to change it so that that owner could sell that property all at once versus piecemealing three different, uh, land use designations together. So we weren't aware it was owned by the same person.
Okay, but in the comprehensive plan, regardless of who the owner is, the land was designated in the comp plan in certain categories.
Correct. So to Kent's point, you'd have three different looking developments. More than likely would not be cohesive, as we're trying to do it now. Uh, it's almost like a, a mini master plan, if you will.
Okay. And the product for the townhomes, what kind, kind, what is the, the, the product? Because I, it looks like vinyl to me from the renderings and not impressive at all.
No, ma'am. Um, all of that is, um, brick and board and batten. Um, if we need to continue, if, if, um, it's the desire of the board, um, not to condition it on that specific look, but rather, um, to make some additional modifications to it, um, in alignment with, um, the board's desire, we certainly can, um, address those issues.
So at the bottom, is this the rear? Is that what?
That's the back, yes. That would be the back. We showed both the front and the rear.
So. You got two, okay.
And I'm going to ask Val Aiken with Liberty to come up and, um, address any other issues you have with regards to that particular product. I know that you, I, I assume that everybody is pretty good with the single family detached product. You just want to make sure that this product is in alignment. So I'm going to let Val talk there.
Commissioner, and. My name is Val Aikens. I'm with Liberty Communities. Also, um, we've recently combined with Dream Finder Homes out of Jacksonville, Florida. Um, and thank you for your time. Thank you for the collaboration that you've given us in, in this project. We really appreciate that, and we look forward to a lot of future growth in, in Henry County. These pictures probably do not do justice to the townhomes, because you can't see the brick around the bottom. Most of the bottom floors are brick, uh, at least on the front, and a water table around the side. And then you have board and batten and a combination of, of, uh, vertical and horizontal, um, hardy plank on the back and the sides to kind of break up the monotony of just your standard hardy plank look on a house. That would, that would be just horizontal.
Uh, any other commissioners? Chair, is there anything specific in terms of the look that you would prefer to see?
Is, is this, it's not going to be a gated community, is it?
No.
Okay. No.
The other thing that we do not show on the picture, a lot of times on the back of our townhomes, we'll do, we can do a porch, or also do a fence that separates the units.
The fence.
Right.
There are various things you could do to enhance the living experience for the customer you just don't see in, in this particular picture.
We, we, we did want a fence so that they'd have privacy. Sure. That was brought up during C A B, and Ms. Collins reminded me of that.
You would at, at least have a ten by twelve patio. Many of the customers will actually want that covered, and so that also enhances the backyard.
We're okay with those being conditions.
Uh, Commissioner Wilson, you have any questions, comments?
I think that would be nice, to give some privacy, you know, for your backyard, because when looking at this, it's just like you walk out, you're just out, so. And then the cover, uh, that sounds like an added feature as well, so.
No questions.
And Chair, oh, I'm sorry, please. Um, I would like to quickly point out one condition. Going back to it, and let me confirm which condition that is. That is condition. That is condition. I'm sorry, I am, oh, I'm sorry, condition eleven, right there. This is some language that staff is moving forward with for many of these multifamily developments. Townhome units, one pound, I'm sorry, five-pound fire extinguisher to be installed on first and second floor, with a fire escape ladder installed per manufacturing specifications on second floor, and at least one window of each sleeping floor. So that is to aid residents in the event of a fire, easy access out, out of the unit. Wanted to make that clear, that that is a condition that staff is looking to add to many of these rezoning requests, as it relates to multifamily.
So the units won't be sprinkled?
There is no current requirement for sprinkler system. Our code, rather, I think the I F C, and I may be mistaken.
I understand what the code is, but we have conditions, I'm just asking the question.
No, code does not require a sprinkler system.
I have a quick question. So the fire escape ladder, would that not make it look more commercial?
The, as far as permitting goes, the state's requirements in I F C considers townhomes, for example, to be that commercial. As far as land use goes and zoning, it is multifamily. We understand that at the permitting side, it does become considered to be that commercial. This condition is to help kind of bridge that gap, as it were. You know, that escape ladder on that second floor, for example, will have residents escape the unit.
I just don't know if I would want a townhome with escape ladder, you know, I don't.
Greetings, how y'all doing tonight? Appreciate the opportunity. Real quickly, there are no sprinkler requirements, however, through our U L D C and our partnership through our collaboration, six or less, anything over six has to have sprinkler requirements. These are four in runs, so it does not require a sprinkler. Not only is it aesthetically pleasing, but it sets well with us as the fire department goes. The addition of the fire escape ladder and the extinguishers was another recommendation from staff, collaboration, which we absolutely one-hundred percent agree with. You will not see that escape ladder, it's aesthetically pleasing to the structure, you won't see it. There's multiple designs out there on the market, and that's still part of the discussion in exactly what it's going to look like, but you will not be able to tell, so it will not look like a commercial structure.
Like a lot of the apartments in New York and.
Yes, ma'am.
You drop the ladder down. Climb out, okay, all right.
Thank you, sir. All right. Once again, just thank to my colleagues for all their comments, especially the part about making sure that we had the privacy, privacy fences. I just, I'd want to give kudos to Val and his team, and also to Attorney Battle. I know I had asked for amenities on both sides, because originally there were only amenities in the bigger single-family structure, and I just, I didn't think that was good for residents to have to go across the road. And you quickly pivoted and made sure that there were amenities throughout all of the communities, which I think is going to be really nice for the residents to have, so. Thank you, I know it's been a couple of years to make this happen, and we literally scrapped everything, went from scratch and built it back up. I appreciate Liberty Communities, Liberty Communities is actually a Henry County builder, and we appreciate people, I think people care more who actually live in the county and work in the county, so we appreciate what you're doing here in the county. I know you just got bought, but I know you still have a Henry County feel, so we appreciate that. That's right, so. And once again, Attorney Battle, great job tonight with all the cases you have, we appreciate the work that you're doing, and please make sure we reduce that to a five percent rental cap. So can we, can we make that standard going forward, because I think we, after every one, we have to go down to five percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here and now, all in favor? Those that oppose? Motion carries.
And Chair, can I get clarification, just for the sake of the record? Was that a motion for approval for the comprehensive plan amendment?
Oh, well, I guess.
It was, it was, it was one, it was, my understanding, this was for both, am I correct, Stephanie?
We would need two motions.
Two motions? Okay, so we need to start over and do them separately.
I move to approve the comp plan amendment.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Those that are opposed? Okay, motion carries.
All right, then I move to approve the development.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second, all in favor?
We're almost there.
So all those in favor, all those in favor? All those that oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. County manager, you have any comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So upcoming meeting is June third, twenty twenty-five, at nine a.m. June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty p.m. We will need a motion for us to go into executive session. Need a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, we will go into executive session and return shortly.
I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'd like to call for a motion to reconvene from executive session.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.